Good evening, welcome to the May 28, 2019, meeting of the Titusville City Council at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum, I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the invocation. We have Pastor Tom Porter of Temple Baptist Church present with us this evening to give our invocation. Good evening, Sarah, how are you?
Good evening, it's an honor to do this.
Thank you, sir.
Father God, we thank you so much for this city and the people that reside in this city. And I pray, Father, for our mayor, vice mayor, city council, our city attorney, all those that city planner, that helped put things decently in an order. And I pray, Father, I don't know what's on the agenda tonight, but you know what's on the agenda. The Bible tells us whether therefore we eat or drink or whatsoever we do, that we should do it all to the glory of God. So help us to keep that in mind, help us to know that we're here to serve people to the best of our abilities. In Jesus' name we pray these things, amen.
Amen, thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of minutes, I see none on there, so we have none to approve. Special recognitions and presentations, we completed them all at the 5:30 meeting. Boards and commissions, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, Titusville Housing Authority, the terms of regular members Billy Fitzgerald, Armando Lombardo, and Laura Ward will expire on May 31, 2019. Regular members Fitzgerald and Ward have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this authority and have requested an appointment to a four-year term which will expire May 31, 2023. Member Lombardo advised that he does not wish to be considered for reappointment at this time, and currently there are no other applications on file. And Ms. Fitzgerald, as well as Ms. Ward are in the audience.
Good evening, ladies, would either of you or both like to speak on any? No? Okay. I can say that I served with these ladies several years ago, is that fair? That'll do. And they do a fine job, so I certainly recommend it. Do I hear any? Yes, sir, you go first.
Okay, I move that we approve Ms. Billy Fitzgerald and Ms. Laura Ward to the Titusville Housing Authority.
I have a motion.
Second with the session.
Go right ahead.
I just want to say thank you for coming. I always like it when people that are trying to get on boards or being reappointed come, just so we can see their face, so I just want to say thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, congratulations for the, how many a time? No. Thank you, ladies, very much for your service.
You would like a break, though.
You would? Yeah, well, twice nothing is still nothing, you know. Next item is North Brevard Library District Board.
Yes, sir, on May 14, 2019, City Council tabled this item at the regular meeting on, till the regular meeting on May 28, 2019, in order for staff to convey City Council's desire to meet the applicants in person if possible. Currently, there is one vacancy on the North Brevard Library District Board with an expired term to expire on September 30, 2019. Currently, there are two applications on file for your consideration. Ms. Jan Corbin and Mr. James Green have expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this board. Their applications are part of your packet.
Are either of those individuals with us this evening? Would you like to come up and speak, ma'am? By the way, just to mention that we do recommend if you're nominated or as a candidate for a board, that you do come in and talk with us for a few minutes, so we very much appreciate your being here this evening.
You're welcome. I'm Dr. Jan Corbin Henderson. I've lived in Titusville for 32 years, and this is, my daughter Jennifer came to provide moral support for me. I just, I decided to apply, I want to, I've retired from the government after a long career. I teach at FIT, but I wanted to get more involved in the community, and I love going to the library and checking out books, and I will say, I do take some back late, but I pay the fees. So, I just am really interested in wanting to kind of start, do this and work with the library, so I hope you all will consider me for that appointment.
Very good, any questions from council? Go right ahead.
Were there any other boards that you were interested? Like, if you didn't get this board, was there another board?
I didn't really go look at any others, it's just I looked at the library because I'm in there so much. I like the library. I have a PhD in computer science, and I teach master of public administration courses at FIT. Scott suffered through some of our presentations of students before, so we teach cohorts of local employees. So, I really haven't looked at any other, but, you know, that's always a possibility or, you know.
Okay. Because we're always looking for qualified people, and you are really qualified, by the way.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I was simply going to say, I'm glad we don't have a concern about being overqualified here, because you are right there. Very well done, and thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you.
Member Jordan.
I'm going to make the motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I move that Jan Corbin, oops. Sorry.
Move that Jan Corbin be appointed to the North Brevard Library District Board.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, I gotta say this, I'm a little concerned about us doing it. I know it looks good for those who want to be appointed to come before us, but to me, it's kind of a disservice to those who can't make it to it, because you're not balancing it. If you're here, then there's a higher possibility that you might be appointed, but there may be a real reason why I couldn't show up for this meeting. And so, I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
To answer that somewhat, anyway, and certainly not in all cases, but that we do contact them, city clerk contacts them, if there is a reason that they can't come, we can take that into account as well and delay it, as we did delay this one, because nobody was here. So, I don't think it's much of, it's a disadvantage, because if they have a legitimate reason, we can react to that. But if they just don't want to come, and somebody else does, it shows a certain desire to serve that the other person may not have, so. I understand your feelings, but I want to give you the other side of it. So, with that.
Can I have a comment?
Yes, sir.
And I see what you're saying, too, Member Jordan, I really do, but I would say, and you guys can attest to this, in our three, going on four years, we've never voted somebody in because they were here or weren't here. This case is a little tricky, because it's the first time I can recall, the first go around, we didn't have somebody knew them personally and spoke up and said, this is what they do. It was a very unique situation, but I definitely would want to open my eyes and keep that in mind, too. But I don't think, we, again, going on four years, and we have not had that situation, because somebody's here. We've done a lot of voting when no one was here, but we knew the person, if somebody knew the persons. In this case, it was a very unique situation, but I take your point.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Congratulations, ma'am, doctor.
Thank you.
Next item, sir.
Yes, sir, Planning and Zoning Commission, this is a two-part action. First part is regular member Robert Shaver has submitted his resignation effective May 20, 2019. His term expires on January 31, 2020. Currently, there is one application on file for consideration. Ms. Jane Spidel has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this board. Her application is part of your packet. So, two votes here, one to accept Mr. Shaver's resignation, and then a second vote for the appointment.
Member Jordan.
I'd move to accept the resignation of regular member Robert Shaver.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign.
And just for council, just so council knows, Mr. Shaver has served on this board for over 14 years, so he's a longtime serving member of this board.
Will we be giving him a certificate of appreciation for that time he served? You guys, you guys trying to get ahead of me, huh? Okay, the next is to appoint Jane Spidel, and I want to say, before we get started, that I know the person. She is a very nice lady, I've had interaction with her on some, on a board she's on, and I highly recommend her, so. Now, you know, remember, Jordan.
Thank you very much. I happen to know her also, and she seems to be a nice person, sometimes. Anyway.
That's not always easy, either, is it?
So, I move to nominate Jane Spidel to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And I'm going to second it.
I have a motion and a second. I see, I saw a light, but it went away, okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, ma'am, I'm sorry, that was my light. I'm back.
Okay.
Real quick, and again, I guess this is kind of more apt, remember, Jordan, how it normally works, when we have somebody come up, it's, several of us know, there's two or three, we have something to say about them, so that was that. But on the other hand, I also want to say that it's been my privilege to work with Jane Spidel, I'm thinking how many years, but I'll stop. She has been a teacher at many high schools, but I knew her, obviously, at Titusville High School, where the words caring and sharing come to mind, so I'm excited that you're here.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Spidel, and thank you for coming in. Next item, sir.
Petitions and requests, sir.
Oh, petitions and requests. Anybody wish to speak under petitions and requests? Please come forward. I see no one, next item, sir, consent agenda.
Yes, sir, consent agenda items, council, are there any items that you would want to pull?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I would want to pull D.
Whoops, sorry.
I think somebody was ahead of me.
Well, yes.
Dan?
You go first.
Sorry.
You were first, actually.
No, I'm good, I'm good, sir.
Okay. I wanted to pull D.
Okay. Clerk, are there any cards from the public?
No, sir, not on consent.
Okay, council, I'll read for the record, there are some resolutions involved in consent, so this will require a roll call vote. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the award of a contract to Community Asphalt Corporation of Barrow, Faro Beach, Florida, to provide the FY 1819 CBDG street paving improvements at various locations within the South Street Target area in the amount of $168,371.98, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8B, accept the easement for Hidden Creek Turnaround. Consent agenda item 8C, adopt resolution number 17, 2019, regarding membership in the American Flood Coalition. Consent agenda item 8D, approve advisability for staff to evaluate and make recommendations to council regarding community engagement procedures for land use-related applications, such as rezoning and comprehensive plan amendments. Consent agenda item 8E, the Titusville Fire Department is requesting approval to accept the annual Pilot Club Mini Grant in the amount of $400 for the purchase of bicycle helmets. Consent agenda item 8F, request approval to review and amend Chapter 3, Article 2 of the City Codes of Ordinances. Consent agenda item 8G, council approval of the presented plan as a monitoring tool to be upgraded with the next evaluation and appraisal report, EAR, Comprehensive Plan Update Cycle, for the Resilient Titusville Vulnerability Analysis East Coast Central Regional Planning Council. And request council direct staff to research and development, see standard C-level rise design evaluations to be utilized for capital improvement planning and possible land use planning where applicable. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the award to AECOM of Orlando, Florida, in the amount of $23,845.04, to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to the development of additional unidirectional flushing plans for the city's water distribution system, and authorize the city manager to execute the work order. Consent agenda item 8I, approve the attached budget amendments to fund engineering and construction services to relocate city utilities, and the award to Wright Pierce, in the amount of $29,300, to provide engineering consulting services included to, but not limited to, design, permitting, limited construction services for the relocation of certain existing city utilities in the FDOT right-of-way on Sisson Road and SR, State Route 405, to accommodate a widening project, and authorize the city manager to execute the work order. Consent agenda item 8J, adopt resolution number 19, 2019, affirming the city's commitment to support the efforts of the East Central Florida Regional Resilience Collaboration.
Can we address the item that was pulled, D?
Well, this, I asked to have D pulled, and this was my question, and this might be a Ms. Peggy question. I agree that we do need to look at putting it into the code, but my question was, will this go back before P and Z, before it comes to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was my clarification that I wanted.
Any more questions?
That was the answer to that question.
Okay. So, we have all items cleared at this point, accept the motion. Or we have a motion, ma'am?
No, you don't have a motion yet.
We're through now.
Oh, yes, I'll point to you.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through J.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Member Jordan.
Thank you, sir.
Having that, roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stockel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir? Oh, city attorney, right?
Yes, sir.
You go.
Yes, sir, next item is 9A. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 20-2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville amending Chapter 15, pensions and retirement, Article 2, general employee's pension plan of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Titusville, amending Section 15-113, reemployment after retirement, providing for in-service distribution of normal retirement benefits in accordance with the Internal Revenue Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date.
Yes, council, before I introduce this item, we have a Foster and Foster report that's hard copy handed out to you, that states that there are no financial impacts as a result of this ordinance. This ordinance proposed changes to seek, to amend the current ordinances to allow for such in-service distributions upon reemployment, such as aforementioned circumstances by the city, provided such retirees have met normal retirement pursuant to the proposed IRS safe harbor provisions. Moreover, a retiree who returns to work under this provision of this section shall not accumulate additional credited services for subsequent periods of employment described in the section, shall not be required to make contributions to the system, nor shall retiree be eligible for any other benefit other than the retire, normal retirement benefits.
Okay, council, what's your pleasure? Yes, ma'am.
I do the move to approve ordinance number 20-2019, the general employee's pension plan.
Mayor, this is a public hearing, so you'll need to open it and request cards before we take a motion.
I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? I will close the pu...
No cards on the board.
I'm sorry?
No cards.
No cards? Okay. Let me just get my cards, my card together here. Okay, council discussion, I'm sorry. You made a motion already, we have a motion and a second, I'll close the public hearing, and roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stockel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please, sir.
Next item is 9B, which is ordinance number 21, 2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville amending Chapter 15, pensions and retirement, Article 3, police officers and firefighters' pension plan of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Titusville, amending Section 15, 127, membership regarding participation by the police and fire chief, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date.
The proposed ordinance amends the City of Titusville Police Officers and Firefighters' Pension Plan, allowing the police chief or fire chief to opt out of the membership in the pension plan as a condition for reemployment after retirement. And again, you have Foster and Foster actuary report that shows there is no financial impact to the city.
Okay. City staff, any presentation on this item? Any comments? Any questions of staff and council? Clerk, are there any speakers? Any cards on this item?
No, sir, no cards.
With that, I'll entertain a motion. Member Nelson?
I'd move to approve ordinance number 21-2019, amending Chapter 15, pensions and retirements.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, or roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stockel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Do you want to read it, or do you want to go?
I'm going to go ahead and request to table this, so, Planning and Zoning Commission tabled this item until June 19, 2019, to allow staff additional time to work with developers on the language of ordinance 22, 2019. Staff is requesting council table this item to their next meeting on 11 June, 2019.
Before we table it, I want to ask for a few moments for some discussion on this item. If I can find my notes, see if I have my notes. There is a lot of controversy on this particular thing, and I think a lot of people don't quite understand what's happening, I guess. First, the first statement I'd like to make is that I have no intention to inhibit development or no desire to inhibit development, I don't think anybody on this board does, from what I've seen, I think it's a very progressive board. There were questions as to how a particular group of people with a certain project approached it. They had a desire to give an escrow bond rather than a performance bond, and they're two different things, although they seem to keep intimating, anyway, that they were the same. Just for clarification, an escrow is where they put up a certain amount of money, theoretically it will cover the cost of it, and it's held in escrow. The downside of that is that if anything comes up, they, and for whatever reason, they have a problem with the escrow amount or any one of the number of things, then effectively that puts the city in a position of becoming a developer, because even though the money is there, the city is responsible for getting the job done. And I don't think that's a good position for a city to be in. Whereas, the performance bond is done through a third party, who's generally an insurance company, and they take charge of the money, the, that's needed, the bond itself, which guarantees performance, and should anything happen, they have to then act as the developer and/or go after the individuals or the business that owes the money. And that was my biggest concern, because, no, we met several times, frankly, and each time they keep going back to the escrow bond, and it's just not the same thing as a performance bond. So, that's basically what started this off. So, we are looking at the situation and reading our ordinance as to how we can deal with that, and I don't think there's as many changes in, as people are assuming. We can do the performance bond, but an escrow bond can still be used for minor parts of the development, the sidewalks, or the, some of the other items that are individual items that can be done easily enough. So, it doesn't require a performance bond for some of the smaller items that come later on, but certainly for the overall project and the greater amount of money, a performance bond is desirable. That's basically all I have to say, and I just want to kind of clear that up, and again, I don't think any of us are looking to inhibit anything or work against any developers for whatever reason. We want the development, we want it to be done, we just want to be, make sure that the city and the people... We just want to be, make sure that the city and the people who are buying properties, because there is a potential with one way to do it, not the other, that if something goes wrong, those people could have bought the properties, but there's no infrastructure or not enough infrastructure or not necessary infrastructure. And then they're stuck with a house that they can't sell, they can't do anything with. So that's, that's what we're looking to accomplish, and I think that's a very legitimate reason for going over this, so. With that, any, any questions or discussion from anyone else that would like to? Go right ahead, sir.
Well, that was one of the reasons I thought tabling this was a good idea. Because I think it would allow the developers, the staff, the citizens to get together and come up with something of a compromise. Because I read through some of the ordinance, and I was like, you know, some of it, I cringed at. And I thought that was just a little too tight there. So I think this will allow some give and take. So I'm, I'm in favor of tabling it July 11.
I agree. Any other discussion? Member Jordan?
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with performance bonds, because when I'm working at the space center, that's one of the requirements we have for the construction out there. And they just want to make sure that the job is going to be complete. And when you have escrow, that's, you know, it's totally out of the, the client's pocket. So we definitely need to look at this thing, and I certainly don't have a problem when it comes down to sidewalks or some smaller things that needs to be constructed. Constructed, that's one thing, but when you're doing a development, we really need to make sure this thing is going to be completed. And the only way you're going to do that is to have a performance bond. And you're right, it's insurance to make sure it's going to be completed. And the city is certainly not in any position to try to complete a development that, you know, they can't afford to do in the first place.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor?
First of all, I appreciate the insertion you put into there, because I do hear a lot of discussion about this. And there are a lot of different angles being taken. And I think that the, the tabling of it is a good idea. You know, your explanation of the escrow, et cetera, I agree. I don't think everybody gets that. And it's not as simple as people seem, and you can get into, I don't like to use the word trouble, but you can get a lot of issues if you don't get the right side of that. So I appreciate that clarification for everybody out there.
Thank you, sir. I see no other lights, or did somebody like to make a, oh, no, a motion to table, basically?
I'd move to table it to July 11.
I have a motion in a second.
I believe it's going to be June 11.
June 11, please. June.
Is it the 19th, it's not July, though, it's June? June 19th, is that right? That was P and Z. C 11.
And what we're hopeful for is that we may have to table it again in June, depending on the result of P and Z. But we may be able to resolve enough of the issues to come back before council.
That's P and Z.
Okay, if P and Z has tabled it to June 19, when is the next meeting?
Our next meeting's June 11.
June or July 11?
June 11. Member Stockel was reading in here where he talked about P and Z was their 19th meeting. They wanted to table to the 19th. Your meeting will be June 11.
Okay. Can I amend my motion to make it the first meeting after the P and Z meeting?
Which will be July 9.
But we don't want to have to re-advertise, we...
Oh.
You can table it again at your June 11 meeting if you're inclined.
Okay, so we'd like, like to table it to June 11.
It's up to council, or we can pull it and we'll re-advertise.
I'm asking you, that's June 11's correct date?
Yes.
So I've moved to table it to June 11.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes.
Clarification, so if we, to re-advertise, we can't, are we going to have to pay to re-advertise it for the meeting for June 11, or no?
No.
Okay. If we were to table it at the June 11 meeting, would we have to pay to re-advertise at that point?
No.
Okay. I'm good with this, thank you.
I got it.
Okay. This is just a regular vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign? Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this action 5.0. A petition easement vacation number 2-2019 has been received from Lloyds Ward on behalf of Wanda Wykow Trust owner to vacate a portion of a public utility draining easement. Wanda Wykow, am I saying that right? Okay, Wykow has contracted to sell the property. The closing date was scheduled, and the encroachment issue was discovered, thereby denying the buyer any ability to obtain financing until the easement was vacated. Staff has not received any objections to vacating the easement as requested and recommends approval.
Staff, any, you have a presentation on this item? Council, are there any questions of staff? I see none.
We have one card, Mr. Ward.
All right, we'll open the public hearing, Mr. Ward. Would you like to come? Any questions for Mr. Ward? I see none, sir. Clerk, is the only card there? Clerk, I'm sorry, okay. Counsel discussion on it? I see a light. Member Nelson?
I was only going to make the motion, if you want.
I'll close the public hearing, you can make a motion.
Move to approve easement vacation number 2-2019. Resolution 18-2019 to vacate a portion of the utility easement on the property located at 925 Williamsburg Drive.
I have a motion in a second from the vice mayor. He beat you out on that one. Well, you can't have it both ways. Not this time. I, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say yes? Oh, roll call, sorry.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stockel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much, I can go get my check now.
Next item?
Next item is 10A under first readings, and this is comprehensive plan amendment 1, 2018, Brooks Landing. This includes ordinance number 23, 2019, and 24, 2019. I'll read both ordinances at this time. Ordinance number 23, 2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by adopting comprehensive plan amendment 1, 2018, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by replacing the existing planned unit development, land use and conservation land use with a residential to land use designation for certain property approximately 71.76 acres in size, having tax ID numbers 2104776, 2104775, 2104780, 2105271, 2105270, located approximately 1,500 feet east of US Highway 1 on the north side of JJ Road, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 24, 2019. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present planned unit development zoning, PUDZ, and open space and recreation, OR zoning, to planned development, PD zoning for certain property approximately 71.76 acres in size, having tax ID numbers 2104776, 2104775, 2104780, 2105271, 2105270, located approximately 1,500 feet east of US Highway 1 on the north side of JJ Road and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading of CPA 1-2018 and associated ordinances. The public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on June 11, 2019. Ms. Rasaka is available to answer any questions, and you do have one card on the item.
Any, any comments, Ms. Rasaka? Please call the card.
Kim Rasanka?
I'm waiting, just for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions of staff at this point? Not hearing any. We have no vote, this is a first reading, so, next item?
Yes, sir, Briarwood Sewer Connection Agreement. On March 13, 2017, a Florida Department of Health inspection found that one of Briarwood Mobile Home Park's septic tanks was failing. Since that time, Briarwood has been coordinating with Florida Department of Health to comply with Florida statutes regarding a failed septic tank. On November 2, 2017, the city notified Briarwood that pursuant to city land development regulations, sanitary sewer is available to Briarwood property, and Briarwood must connect to the sewer system and start paying monthly sewer fees within one year of the notice. Ultimately, Briarwood decided to connect to the entire property to the city sewer system in order to comply with Florida statute regarding septic tanks and comply with the city's land development regulations for connecting to available sewer system. The subject settlement agreement stipulates that a schedule for Briarwood to design, permit, construct, and commission a private sewer collection system and all, and all public sewer improvements necessary to connect their property to the city's sanitary sewer. Subject to Briarwood's compliance with the stipulated schedule and the Department of Health's septic tank compliance requirements, the agreement defers the requirements for Briarwood to pay monthly sewer fees until they commission their private sewer system project and sewer connection. Therefore, it's recommended that city council approve and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement entitled "The Settlement Agreement Between the City of Titusville and DHY LLC."
Staff, any comments on this? Counsel, any questions for staff?
And we do have one card.
And please call, I'll open the public hearing, call the card, please.
Kim Rasanka?
Any questions?
Oh, I have one. Can I do one? One question?
You can do one.
Okay. Kim, how many trailer, or how many, how many residences are going to be hooked up to the sewer system? How many septic tanks are we getting rid of?
I'm sorry, you're, you're gonna have to come up. Otherwise, you won't be on the microphone. Thank you, ma'am, state your name and address directly.
Kim Rasanka with the law firm of Cantwell &amp; Goldman. I'm here representing DHY LLC and CJY LLC, which are the owners of the Briarwood Mobile Home Park. There are currently 37 lots. They will all be hooked up.
Okay, I was just curious, thanks.
You made her walk all that way.
I'm sorry, Kim.
Need the exercise.
Thank you, Mrs. Rasanka.
Thank you.
Any other cards, clerk? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? More, any further discussion?
No, I want to make a motion if she will let me, okay. I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to execute agreement entitled "Settlement Agreement Between City of Titusville and DHY LLC."
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, where are we?
Yes, sir, the inner local agreement between the City of Titusville and the North Brevard Economic Development Zone requires that the city review and approve the zone's budget concerning expenditures of the city's fund, funds. The FY 2020 annual operating budget for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone is part of your packet, and it was approved by the zone board on May 10, 2018. Mr. Troy Post is available to answer any questions that you may have. And again, applaud the efforts of the North Brevard Economic Development Zone and Mr. Troy Post for helping, to help the northern end of this county redevelop, so appreciate that.
Mr. Post, would you like to come up, please? Reintroduce yourself to council, if you don't mind?
I'm Troy Post, and I'm the executive director for the Economic Development Zone. I appreciate Scott's comments. Also, appreciate the fact that both he and the mayor come to our monthly meetings for the zone, and they stay informed of what we're doing and provide a lot of input to give us some guidance. We've completed our eighth year of the zone, it's hard to believe. So as we enter our ninth year, we still have a lot of work we need to do. We still work toward the goal of economic diversification. But I am pleased to report that by this point, we've been able to do a program of assistance in each one of the programs that are outlined in our strategic plan that was adopted back in 2012 by this body. So we've made some great progress, but there's still a lot of work that has to be done. Some of the things that I'll just call your attention to on the budget for this year, we're projecting just a little bit over $400,000 to be the increment that we'll receive from the city's zone. That's the increase of property tax that we get on the valuation of property. We'll use that, the bulk of it, to do some improvements out at the Commerce Park, to do another pad-ready site out there. We'll also put some monies toward the rent structure for the co-launch program. That program, surprisingly, is getting ready to complete its fourth year. And we've been talking to some private sector users as we consider what the future is going to be for co-launch. It was never really the intent that we would have that as a county-owned enterprise for an indefinite period of time. So we'd like to be able to jettison that, let a private sector group take it on. The popularity of coworking spaces has been proven in the private sector, the success of WeWork and several other big national companies. And so we have a couple of local candidates that are now interested in trying to take that on with us. So I think it'll be an exciting year as we continue to move forward and incentivize projects to come into the northern area.
Member Jordan? What are you, that was you? Okay, see the number there. I would like to make a comment, and yes, I do attend every meeting, because I think your, your position and your board do a great job. It's a pleasure to attend those meetings. And you, you, I think, are amazing, because you seem to do it mostly by yourself.
I do have a very extended staff that does a lot, seriously, both here at the city and also with the county, so. And it is a good board, so I appreciate you saying that.
Well, I, I know, having done similar work, how difficult it can be at times. And the funding that was put together 10, I guess, was started about 10 years ago then, if you've, probably more than that, I guess, by our former county commissioner, and I'm happy to say this council and myself participated, not this exact council, but the city council, participated in it, and it has made all the difference to our economic development and our diversification, which is what we've needed all along, was diversification as we were a, basically a, one industry town. And that was controlled by the federal government, which we had good times, but we had very bad times because of that. So I want to, again, just show, state my appreciation of what you do, sir.
Well, thank you.
And if there isn't anything else, we, I guess we have to approve your presentation, is that on there? I have a motion, I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign? I see none, passes unanimously. Next, sir, petitions and requests from, that's me. Petitions and requests, would you like to speak, officer? No, I guess not. With the green wave there, too, that was a bad. Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have a request.
This is council report, so.
This is a council request. I would like to see us look at some type of incentives for green buildings, some sustainable-type buildings. Maybe, I'm, I'm not sure what I'm asking, I'm not sure what staff would suggest, but something to help us get from here to some, some more green buildings.
I, I think you're asking for
The visibility. Correct.
I will, I, I'm not, I do support what you're saying, don't misunderstand, but it, it is a very extensive area. I mean, very, lots, lots of information, lots of different situations. I got involved with it when hotels, quite some time ago, was coming in. They wanted to do the, the green building, which is a great thing. But I do want to make sure everybody understands, and I'm not saying we, by no means saying we shouldn't do it, but... but just, it's putting a lot on staff, and it should, it's probably going to take some time, so don't be surprised by that.
So maybe instead of asking for advisability tonight, maybe ask that they do a presentation on, these are the ideas that maybe we have that we should look at?
I think that'd be a great place to start.
That might be a place.
And then we can know more about what we're asking for.
Yeah.
All of us, because I, I do not know all about it, but I do have some experience in. That sounds like a good idea. I do have another light, so let me, let the Vice Mayor.
About that. And this is our report time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a couple of quick things.
Well, I mean, this, we're talking about this item first.
Okay, well, I agree with you, and I was going to go that, that area. But I do have something else. But I was going to say, certainly no one would argue with the green, green incentives. I think it gets tricky sometimes. And I don't want to call it an overreach because it's not. We do need to be the leader in that area. But I think, you know, some of the things you're concerned about is, you know, what it's going to cost us, what kind of incentives will there be? And I, I kind of hear Mayor when he says it's going to be quite extensive and may take some time. I like what you said about, hey, how about give us some ideas? Let's just talk ideas. And then we really can't get accused of oversight and overstretching and too much in our hand. I'd kind of like to hear those, too, because quite honestly, I'm not quite sure what kind of ideas could be out there. And I know there can be. I know we, we've had the economic, environmental people up there. We talked trees recently. Even though we think, well, we know this and we know that, there's always something out there we've never heard of.
Yeah. And I think, I think the staff would be very capable of bringing back some ideas and saying, what if this is an area we could go to?
Ma'am, could we suggest that this be an item that counsel directs the TEC to take a look at?
Good idea.
We could. We could. Or maybe TEC and staff.
Well, I think that, that's kind of their charter, is to evaluate some environmental issues that counsel wants them to come back to you with their, their ideas and recommendations.
Well, they have an idea regarding the incentives. I mean, because TEC, I think, could come up with, these would be great proposals. But then, how do we implement it? And I think that sort of staff's bailiwick there.
They could also make recommendations of how, how other cities implement incentives and what, what they involve.
That would be okay with me.
I think that's good stuff. I think it's a good first step. And I think your thought is well, well-taken. I'm just not sure how to get there. And I think that's an excellent idea, because it seems to me, and I've certainly had some questions from some people in that committee, shouldn't you guys ask us this or ask us that? Well, this seems to be down the middle of the plate.
This seems to be on their, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to take a few of these lights off because we have others coming up.
I took mine off. I took mine off.
Good girl.
I know.
Okay. I can still go. Where do you want to go? I'm going to go fast.
So before, before we go, do I have a...
You did have a second.
Do we have a consensus from counsel that will, will take this to the TEC?
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
We don't need a motion. You finish your...
Thank you. Just two, two things, really. One of them is, I just think it would be worthy of note that if you've been in this town very long at all, you remember Dr. Carrillo. And, I mean, he may have seen all of us at some time. I know the city attorney was also at the funeral, but he passed away, and attended the funeral a week ago. And, you know, just some of the numbers they threw out there, you know, 50 years of practicing. He, he started off in Cuba and went through that whole thing to come over here and restart. And, you know, did his intern, had he, was a full-fledged doctor in Cuba, but had to get, do another internship to become a doctor. And, you know, he went through it all. And just an amazing, amazing man. And I just thought it was worthy of note that, the contribution he made to this community in so many ways. He was in there with Dr. Story for a long time. But so between the two of those icons, pretty amazing stuff. And the second thing, I have now, since I proposed it previously, spoken to Robin Fisher a little bit. And being the humble person he is, he said all the things I thought he'd say. But that being said, we are, I, I talked to city manager a little bit. And city manager, I'd like you to lead me a little bit on what we can do. It's a, a little more simple, and I think everybody, including Robin, would be more pleased with something a little more simple. And that is to name a, a walkway or a drive within the Titus Landing, where if you're walking along the green area, and there's a Robin Fisher Way, whatever we could call that. And city manager, can you give me an idea of what we need to do next?
Sure. Currently, there's no road names within the, the private property of the Titus Landing Mall. So there are several areas that could be named, and we perhaps could provide the, the equipment to, you know, the sign and the poles and that sort of thing. We'd have to get the developer to approve that, because it is private property.
Is it something that I or staff needs to do with the developers? It seems, first of all, it seems a lot easier than going through all the hoops to get a, a street renamed, and of course, we know how that goes sometimes.
It is. We, of course, we can reach out to the developer on counsel's behalf if you all are near those.
Can we do that and get an update perhaps at the next meeting or whenever?
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I can't imagine the developer not wanting to support.
I can't either.
After all that Robin went, went through on that project. So that's great. And certainly, if I can give any assistance in that area, I'd...
Yes, sir. And the challenge Vice Mayor and I spoke, we worked through, is you've got US 1, can't rename that. You got Harrison.
Right.
And then you've got Hopkins. That's, those are the three main roads that surround that property. So I think this is a viable alternative to renaming a road, and it would provide Robin the, the appropriate recognition for his hard work and dedication on this project.
And clearly, what I was looking for was a, a road and the proximity that brings attention to the, the main iconic thing that he did. And I think the idea of putting it within that area, within the landing, whether it be a road out there or even possibly a walkway, I'd be, I think I'd be good, and I, having spoken to Robin, sometimes I feel like the smaller, the better he is. But he's going to, I think he'll be pleased with this. So thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing that up, sir. Member Stokel?
This is back on the green incentives, which I'm, I'm for bringing that to TEC. However, when they go to TEC, I'd also like them to look at, because when I hear green incentives, I think, okay, we're either waiving something or we're not getting funding for something, or we're giving a grant, which is money. I'd also like to see, like, best practices for that, but also see what we could do as a city to continue with our solar panels, our charging stations, and things that we're doing, and kind of see that cost-benefit analysis to see, are there things that we can do at city hall that can help us become more green? And then in turn, or see if, like, there's companies out there that are doing that on their own because it's a benefit to them, and they care about the environment, too. So thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, we look forward to having our new city hall.
Built to...
Green construction.
Is it going to be green?
Just to, anybody else? Member Jordan, your light is on.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate all the graduates from elementary school to middle school to high school, even the little pre-k who's going to kindergarten. It's always cute to say that. I'm actually speaking at two graduations tomorrow. Education is so important, and, you know, with everything that's going on in Titusville especially, we need to make sure that we are bringing our young people on. I congratulate everything that the young people are doing. I certainly am impressed with our group that we have here, the kids who are, do the mock council and everything. But just want to congratulate them, because to me, these kids are a whole lot smarter than what we could ever imagine to be when we were the age which you are.
They are. And I must comment, you can see this hand? It shook the hands of 530 or 40 graduating students, and it was a wonderful experience. I agree, I agree with you. Yes, ma'am? Do you have another?
Stero's going to shoot me.
Another report?
But I got to say, we got to, we got to give a shout-out for Stero, who is dancing this weekend.
Who is, is what?
She is dancing this weekend.
And she dances, too?
She is doing dancing with Brevard to raise money for a lot of different charities. And some of them with the sheriff's office. So good luck. I'd say break a leg, but...
Where is this happening? And when?
Saturday.
Oh, who?
Yes. I would, I would be, I would be there waving yachts if I could.
I will be there.
I may be there.
Anything else, ma'am? That's true, that's true. Anything else? Okay, I, just to comment on my report. You have my report. I, I do want to say that I did not make the Greater Titusville Renaissance Board Meeting. I intended to, but I had a conflict. I did make the high school, as I said, graduations, and three Memorial Day presentations.